I'd like to welcome everyone to the Leeds Town Council, May 23rd, 2012, 7:05 PM. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance led by Joe Allen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Starting with roll call, we'll start with you, Joe.
Joe Allen?
Nate Blake.
Alan Roberts.
Councilor Rohr.
Frank Boeckel.
Are there any declarations of abstentions by any council members on items that are on Tonight, we're looking at a consent agenda which includes tonight's agenda and the minutes from May 23rd and April 9th, 2012. Why is that there? I don't know either. What's stretched there? We're looking at minutes from April 9th. How can we look at minutes from today? It's not even over.
That should say May 9th.
Yeah, it's supposed to say May 9th.
Joe, I know that you had a couple of corrections on there. I'm not sure that those got...
Those have not been corrected.
I was wondering what the...I know there's been a change in the citizen comment and that you're saying now that people cannot comment on things that are on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, we pulled that from a couple of different municipalities that operate that way. And I'll tell you that the way that meetings should go is to address whatever those items are that are on the agenda. And citizen comment, I totally agree with citizen comment, but I also encourage citizen engagement with their town elected officials and with their town appointed officials.
That's Floyd Wood here.
Any other time than when we've got large items on the agenda, and I'll give you a reason why. I'm a taxpayer. There's paid staff sitting here. I don't think that it's right for my tax dollars to be used while paid staff is sitting here and we have dialogue between elected officials and citizens over whatever their concerns are. I think that dialogue should exist. I think that dialogue should exist at times when paid staff is not on the clock that's taking my tax dollars because as an elected official, I'm more than happy to engage in that at any other time.
Is this you saying that or is this Jerry West?
That's me saying that. Peter?
Thank you.
So that was the direction that went on there. However, this agenda is up for us to look at and approve at this point.
Well, I was wondering if after the work session, there could be some time to take some citizen input on the items that were on the agenda tonight.
I would say that before or after a meeting, we could sit here all night to discuss it, but I don't think my tax dollars and your tax dollars, which are very minimal, should be paying for paid staff to sit there while we have the dialogue. That's my opinion.
I'll take notes for free.
I think in open dialogue, I don't know that there needs to be notes unless we're looking at it as an open meeting. If we're looking at it as an open meeting, perhaps what we need to do is schedule similar to what Grapevine scheduled was an open house, and then we can just have that dialogue, whatever it is that you want to talk about and not deal with anything that's on the agenda for discussions. That will be what our agenda is. I'm not opposed to that, but if...that's not my decision. There's entire council sitting up here. I'm not alone on that.
I thought the paper said that at 7 o'clock, there would be a meeting that would be discussing why we're here for Grapevine.
I don't know of any posting that said that. I don't know of any posting that said that.
In the Deseret News, it said from 4 to 6, it would be an open house to discuss...the Leeds Town Meeting would be at 7 o'clock.
Any posting that was put in by the Deseret News is the responsibility of the Deseret News, not of Leeds Town.
Then how do we know here? Here I am, sitting here, but...
We post in four places. One is on a public notification website that is monitored and operated by the state of Utah. We post at the Leeds Town Post Office. We post at Leeds Town Hall, and we post on Leeds Town Website. That's what posts the agenda, those areas.
Is this amended agenda posted at the post office?
Absolutely. There was. Can you attest to that, Fran? And Amy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who decided that we can't talk about the things that are on the agenda?
I would love to talk about whatever you want to talk about, but why should we sit here while staff and we have this back and forth dialogue and we pay for staff to be here to deal with these items?
So we can know what's going on?
You're here. You're here to listen to what's going on, exactly. So how about if this council conducts this business and you can hear what goes on? That's exactly what...
But we have no input?
I would encourage anybody to give me a call.
Do any of the other council members know about this change?
No, they probably seen it the first time they seen the amendment or the amended agenda.
So you made the decision?
Yes. I made the decision to put it here. Ralph? However, this agenda is adopted or accepted, that's what the deciding factor is. And that's what we're looking at right now, looking at the consent agenda. And if we can't decide on that, then I guess business is done because without the agenda, we cannot move forward.
Now, would helping these comments be on the record if they're not on the agenda and not discussing it?
In a public hearing. In a public hearing, that's when...that is normally when the public is documented for their comments on whatever the issue is that generates the public hearing.
How do we create a public hearing?
A public hearing will be created. It's already...it's part of the annexation agreement that Grapevine has to have a public hearing.
What about a public hearing with the members of the counciling room so that they all understand?
The public hearing is in front of the town council members. There's one public hearing that's already took place on the planning commission level. There's another public hearing that's required on the town council level.
When you have meetings with any developer, does paid staff get...are they there taking minutes?
No, they're not.
They're not?
The only time that we're required to take minutes is when there is enough elected or appointed officials together to constitute a quorum, then it has to be, number one, it has to be posted as a public meeting. Number two, you have to document those things that are...that take place.
So has there ever been a meeting in which the developer can talk and disperse with you as a council and they just spend on somebody's been taking minutes?
Not when there's over two individuals, other than this council, no. It would have to be a public meeting.
But they still have had the opportunity to talk, and that's what we're saying?
Absolutely. And you know what? They have come in. They have come in here, and so has a few public, and you know what? I used to count them on one hand. However, within the last week, I have to hold up two hands because now I can count them, I have to use two hands to count the number of public that has approached me personally in this building or at my home and had open discussion about whatever it is they wanted to discuss.
Except I think we're missing the point here. The point is, we're all citizens of Leeds. We should have an idea of what other people are thinking, and if one person's coming to you, none of us can hear it. And I think that it needs to be by the council, an amended agenda, that we have a right to have everyone come to one particular place and hear what other people are thinking. Otherwise...
I agree with you there, Danielle.
We don't know what we do.
I agree with you. That's why if you want to have an open forum or an open house similar to what Grapevine presented earlier, then we will post that and we will have that, and you can talk about whatever it is that you want to talk about.
If we have an open house and all of you are here, we have to have staff taking minutes?
Yes, that's correct.
There's a little hole in the argument. There's no difference. Let's take a minute.
You want to make tonight that open house?
Sure.
No, I'm just saying what's...
I'm asking a legitimate question, but you're right. Staff would have to be here because it is a public meeting.
Here's the question. What's the difference between an open house and staff taking minutes and what we're doing now? That's his question.
I know that we won't accomplish anything that's on this work session, so maybe it would be best for your council members, if they're going to engage in a work session, maybe they need to hear what your comments are first before we engage ourselves in that work session. Do it.
Yes. 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 And as taxpayers, I don't think we object to being able to pay the council members for the additional time that they're going to stand.
The council members don't get paid, neither does the mayor.
That was a delight.
Well, he means that.
You guys don't realize how much time these guys put in.
Mayor, can I maybe throw out a couple suggestions? I know where the mayor's coming from, and it is difficult sometimes when you're...any of you that would be on a council or a board meeting, you want to go through the items and you want to get feedback from the people, but having interruptions during the meeting does slow things down and it's not effective. I would suggest that we go through these items and then, as we talk about them, allow at the end of the items we've gone through the discussion, allow, if the council agrees, allow the people in the audience to make comments about what we've discussed as council because we'll be hearing some of the same things over and over again that we've already maybe heard before, which are issues about domain and closing roads and things of that nature. We would just go through this final, this draft, call it a draft, make our comments, and then see how much time we have and then allow citizens to make comments about where the council is in regards to some of the topics. And then have order, you know, instead of...if everybody agrees while we're talking about it, not interrupting while we're trying to do the work meeting. I think that's part of the confusion because it used to be in the town, we used to have work meetings and we'd have a town meeting the next two weeks. And now we've kind of combined a work session and a general meeting, and everybody sees that. The whole idea of the work session was the council work on things, and therefore, there wasn't really any dialogue. It's just they're working, just like you would be working at your office. You wouldn't be just entertaining people at your office while you're being paid. And then you have your open town meeting, and we blended the two together so we'd meet twice a month instead of having a meeting, a work meeting, and then an official town meeting for actions. So I just throw that out for discussion and not to throw anybody under the bus or change any of the rules, so.
So would you like to put that in the motions?
Well, I'd like to get feedback from everybody else. I don't want to put anybody on the spot.
I like that idea.
Mayor?
I'd definitely like to hear what the townspeople have to say. I've always wanted an open ear. I strongly encourage anybody to give me a call. You can find my phone number online. Just Google my name, it's there.
But like what she said, is if one person calls you, it's easier to have a discussion with everybody here so we all know what's being said versus he said, she said, he said, she said, and that's how rumors hit back.
I agree with you, Joe. I agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, it's better to have it all...I want to call you and say, hey, this is how I feel, but it's just better if we all talk openly.
Ralph?
As a member of the town, I'm in agreement with Frank's suggestion. I'd be glad to listen to you guys discuss first before we get any input, provided you can Google on expeditiously and give us a little time, if we need it. We might not even need it.
That's a big if right there. Ralph?
But you're in control, Mayor.
Alan Howard?
Mayor, I would like to address the whole council on what you and I talked to about the other day. I would like to do that before you go into the Grapevine discussion.
Okay, I'll allow that during the citizen comment if that's all right with you.
I suggest then we move forward to Frank's discussion or Frank's plan.
So we want...what I need to make sure of here because we can modify this agenda somewhat, but if we modify it to an extent, and what that exact extent is, I don't know, then we're breaching that Open and Public Meetings Act where you have to post that 24 hours in advance. And that's something this town will not stray from policies and procedures of Utah code and of our own ordinances. And so to accomplish what you're asking, probably would be best just to simply strike any wording after citizen comment. But I'm not going to make this motion.
I'll make the motion on the consent agenda that we strike line number eight, any wording after citizen comment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are you going to approve the...
He said consent agenda. Consent agenda includes minutes.
You didn't say to approve consent agenda. You said to strike.
No, he said to approve consent agenda and strike the wording...
Exactly.
Yes.
After citizen comment. It's been moved by Nate Blake and seconded by Joe Allen to approve tonight's...
No, that was Angie.
Oh, Angie. Sorry. I should have written that down. It's been moved by Nate Blake and seconded by Angie Rohr.
Point of question, Mayor.
Yes.
Do we need to put a qualifier on this because if we...once we go through our business and give our opinions, then we open up the floor. Do we want to set a time limit or do we want to have some guidelines?
Nope, I don't, Frank. They want...if the public wants open discussion, then I'll be here all night.
But Alan, I think we can all live with three minutes.
I'm not going to put a stipulation, Ralph. Stipulations before have caused some discomfort with people. So I'm going to be open on this one, and I'm going to allow individuals that do speak to use their common sense in respecting other people's rights as to how long they may That's my opinion, but that's...there's a motion. If you want to amend that and actually put a timeframe there, then that's up to you.
Well, my point is, is that I think we allow them to make comments so that we can answer, clarify things that we're talking about, but we don't need to keep beating a dead dog or a dead horse to death, you know? We've already covered the topic and it's been clear.
You can't make your point in three minutes. 15, 20 is not going to help, and it just defeats everything.
I need more than three minutes. We have a motion on the floor. If you'd like to make an amendment to that, you can and see how the individuals who moved and seconded that.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion that we've done in two, three minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, you're comfortable...Ashley, you're comfortable with that, Nate?
Yeah.
Because you made...and so are you, Joe.
Ask Angie, that was good.
I'm sorry. I wrote that down. You seconded that. Are you comfortable with the timeframe of three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a amended motion to accept tonight's consent agenda and to strike the wording after citizen comment and to allow up to three minutes per citizen. You didn't say that, but that's what we needed. How old's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I can't have the agenda look like that and then say, well, geez, he's wishy-washy, you know, we can move him any way we want. I had no choice. I'm not aware of any. Yeah, that's next on the list. Well, kidding, but it's going to move right into it. Item number seven. The town has employed a new clerk recorder, Amy Fisher, and we're going to do that oath of office right here. A lot of times, we just do it during the workday, but I think it's important that especially enough people from town are to these meetings recently that...so it'll give you an idea of who staff is. So we have a clerk recorder, we have a deputy clerk recorder, and Amy Fisher is going to be...become our newest clerk recorder. So Fran, you're up.
All right. Go ahead, then. This is the oath of office. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name. Aye, Amy Fisher. Having been appointed... Having been appointed. To the office of clerk recorder... To the office of clerk recorder. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I will support... That I will support. Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States... Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Utah... The Constitution of the State of Utah. And ordinances and resolutions... And ordinances and resolution. Of the town of Leeds... Of the town of Leeds. And that I will discharge... And that I will discharge... The duties of my office... The duties of my office. With fidelity.
I would remind the public, when you come in and interact with these staff members, they're not your enemies, they're your friends. If you want to have enemies...I can't speak for these four. You can be an enemy with me. They're here to help you, and they will interact and get your, you know, what it is that you need. Okay, we'll move on to item number one in our work session, which is discussion on preliminary findings for a budget of fiscal year 2012, 2013. Jean, are you awake? Okay, Jean, if you'll come up and sit here, what Jean has before us...actually, I'll let her explain where at one point she's at with this proposed budget.
Okay. I went and you've been previous years and then went...
Can we speak louder, closer to you?
Current year?
It's going to have to be closer, even.
Closer and closer?
Yeah. Eat it.
Eat it?
Yeah.
You know what I've been through today? You want me to eat it?
No, don't eat it. Just speak loud enough.
It is on?
It's on. You just have to have it closer.
Anyway, Alan changed the format of the budget this year, so I just kind of went through and changed a lot of things, some things I didn't get to change because I didn't know how you wanted to do it.
Okay, let me jump in right there. If the town council members recall the last...
Right.
The last one that we received, and this is what the template that has been used, I don't know how long, the last few years because I don't sing.
Eight years since I've been here.
It doesn't even go in alphabetical order of what our accounting items are, so you have to thumb back and forth. And so those were the changes, was just to bring it in line with the...being in order with our accounting. And also that we need to understand that the report that Jean turns in to the state for budgets is not as detailed as this one that we're looking at, and especially is not as detailed as what our accounting is because this budget's not as detailed as that. And so I think that's the reason that this old template was used because it patterns a little bit closer to what the state's looking at, so I think it's best that we have a little bit more depth in it so we really understand what these line items are. Go ahead, Jean.
Okay, so anyway, I put in the revenue, and you can change anything you want, but that's what, according to what we took in this year, that I went by. And on the expenditures, I did the same thing, I went from what we took in this year, and you can see it's a little bit higher because there's been a few things added, but so...
You can see that the categories spring up two years ago, not only the year that we... I shouldn't say two years ago, the previous year than what we're on. I think it helps us to get an idea of...
Where we are current?
Yeah, where we are current and where we were on the previous budget, and it helps us to trend just a little bit. Of course, there's a lot of variables.
Has anybody gone through it and looked at it?
I have.
Have you? You want to make any changes? You want to do anything or...
And you got mine last week that I...
I did get yours.
Yeah.
There were just a few things I had questions on...
Okay.
On the expenditures. Got to find it again. Under general government utilities, there's a line item for gas. Why does that show $25,000?
On for this year or...
Yeah, we don't have any data for previous years. Why does that show $25,000? What is that exactly?
I think it's on...I put it on for the main... I think it's on, I put it on for the maintenance and the fuel of the, of the vehicle.
Okay, so this is vehicle, not natural gas?
Right, not natural gas, no.
But that line item should be natural gas because it's under utilities.
Okay, you, and we're going to break that up?
Under utilities, we do want to separate that for, at this point. Now, I know that when you send that report into the state, that it's not that easy.
It will be, but I'm going to, it's going to be...
But I think it helps us to see what, what utilities are costing.
Like on, on utilities for power on highway and street? That is accurate. That is what we pay.
Yes, I, I'm just, uh, wondering if maybe, if so, if that's actual vehicle fuel, if that could go down under, uh...
It can go anywhere you want it.
On parks slash public works? We've got a line item for fuel slash vehicle maintenance?
Yeah, we have it.
Now, if you'll notice that, that under parks and public works, and also under streets and highways, you'll see that there's fuel and vehicle maintenance under both categories.
Oh, okay, I've seen that.
And that, that's intentional because some funds will be spent...
And so I can divide that?
In each one of those categories. So if we just had a blank, you know, fuel and vehicle, that could be split, and it's easier in the accounting part to split that up anyway.
Yeah.
So we know what really is costing for the parks, what's really costing for them.
That's the way I'd like to see it.
Okay, we'll, we'll just divide that.
So like that $25,000 between those two categories?
Yeah. And then, then on the, the power and the water, that's all going to be separated now. It's not going to be in one lump sum, so you'll know exactly what we're creating.
I agree.
Like if you go down the, uh, your reports, where they give you financial statements, you'll see the same thing, so you'll know where exactly we are.
Okay.
And it's a lot easier, I like it this way. But anything you want to change, you can, because we have plenty of time to do that. But we have to keep it, the revenue and the expend, expenditures the same. Okay?
And one of the other changes, we moved in professional services, we looked at, we used to, and still in the accounting, i- it used to be like legal and the actual accounting that is contracted out to the town were always separate.
And we're not doing that.
Yeah, well, those will all come under professional services.
They will, and that's what I did for this year, 2013.
So we have nothing under planning?
Well, planning, yes.
Yes.
But, but I really didn't know what, could be planning?
We, we've not had...
Planning before?
Expenses specific for that. We pay Bob when he's working on our dime, when he's working on an applicant's dime, the applicant's paying.
So he goes under...
However, those monies still come through the town.
Yeah.
And yet, because applicants are charged for whatever the process is according to our fee schedule, and so they're charged whatever those direct costs are.
But we're not putting it on our budget because...
I think we should put a number on that line item.
No, I, I can pull that out and put that in there very easily.
And what that magic number is?
Sure.
I, I don't know.
It's not, it's not written.
It will be like on revenues, because that's where you're going to say, how much planning do we think will be borne by any future applicants on anything? And what will just come about because of changes that the town does in any type of ordinances or, or things that they change.
So if you want to give me an idea of what you think it's going to be on expenditures and revenue, I can do that.
For planning?
For planning. I had no idea what to put in there, that's why I'm here.
Hi, Jean.
Huh?
You helped me under highway and streets.
Yeah, I'm there.
On construction road funds.
Uh-huh.
Uh, in the year 2010 to 2011, uh, we spent $21,767, 60.
Uh, B and C road funds, yeah.
Yeah, and you've got in here a budget of 2011, 2012, $50,000.
Right.
And 2012, $50,000.
We've got to use that money.
Okay, so we've got, that's money we've got to use?
Yes.
So that's the, other impact road funds, that's $20,000 also?
Right.
Okay.
And then I put the $50,000 in for, for, um, B and C road.
Okay.
We need to use that. Frank?
Yep.
Yep?
Oh, what's on?
Some more questions?
We had discussion last meeting on, and it was open discussion with the public that was still here at that time, as far as the town funding fireworks and the Fourth of July correct was, was done there. At that point, it appeared that the majority of the people that were here, including the council, were, you know, still in favor of that.
And I have had nobody call and say they would do it.
Jean, you're not going to get anybody to call and say they're going to do it.
I will get somebody.
I...
The fire department.
Thank you.
You have to be, uh...
I, I would like to, if somebody will do the cooking in the, setting up. Because we put the money in, it's in the budget for the food.
Fire department's volunteering to do it.
Fire department, just volunteering to do it.
We'll just take care of it.
You will?
Absolutely.
And the food?
We'll take care of the whole, the whole thing.
I'll?
Just make sure that the pavilion's in our space.
You got it.
That's all we need.
So is that the breakfast and evening entertainment?
Um, well, they do fireworks.
Boy, you know, if I say evening entertainment, I better get support before I say that.
Well, I, but the breakfast as well?
But the breakfast, absolutely, and the, and the afternoon activities, fireworks stuff.
Okay, wonderful.
And we'll, we'll all talk to the people that support us on the other and see.
You want to do games?
In the afternoon.
Okay.
If that's the case, it probably would be just as well to strike that from the budget because there won't be any transaction.
Don't, don't tell the support of helping pay for fireworks.
Oh, I don't, I won't strike that. I won't be up to tip.
I'll give you a dollar for fireworks.
I'll give you a dollar.
So how would people donate to that cause, Jean?
We, we do have people donate, absolutely.
How do you donate?
Oh, write a check, we give it to Murray, we, we are treasured. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
The other line items that I need to bring your attention to, and I can see that Jean plugged in some numbers.
Yes, I did.
If you look at expenditures under general government, and you're looking at administrative wages, those have always been lumped together. I think it's important, especially...
And I will break those down.
Especially to look at paid staff and understand where costs are for specific job titles. I think it's important that we, we split that up and list each, each employee's position separate, not employee, but position that they fill. You'll also see underneath there is plug-in line items for elected and appointed officials' compensations. Now, a statement that I had made earlier in the year, I don't care who your elected or appointed officials are, I do not believe people should be elected or appointed to slavery. What that magic number is, I'm not going to make that decision.
Well, I made it.
But at that time, I also made the statement that for what time that I am in this position that I have, I will not ask for any compensation from this town, but I still believe that there needs to be compensation for whomever sits in these positions. And I don't know what that magic number is, but if you put $1 in there, in that line item, at least it establishes and says, look, in our budget, we acknowledge that there should be some compensation. So my suggestion is to plug a dollar in that.
But what you think you want in there? I pulled what I thought you would like.
I don't think any of us are here for the pecking.
I don't either, but I think your time is worth something.
Sure, but I would agree with what the mayor said, that while I'm here, I wouldn't be willing to accept any kind of compensation from the town. At least till we have a larger budget that, that could afford it.
Nate?
So what about in the little morning, in the next few days, what about the insurance issue that we were talking about?
You guys get flattered?
I'm, I'm...
What about, because they may be required to have paid staffers, so if we did, if we did accept the dollar payment per year, then we are paid staffers at that point.
Explain what you're referring to there, Nate.
What, what a few of us talked about is, is Leeds, Leeds municipality offering insurance to the staffers and employees of Leeds, but if it be on our dime, we'd actually pay for it through the municipality. Uh, and Jean's working with an insurance company now, so we don't know if they're going to have to be paid staffers or not, if, uh, if they accept, not paid staffers.
They're close to calling me back, yeah.
So, so that number may have to be a dollar figure, uh, $1 a year.
It will be more than that?
No, I mean, $1 a year, if we're on the salary, $1 a year. I don't know that answer.
We'll wait until I find out what the price is.
No, I'm, I'm not here, I'm not here to make any money, but if there is a clause, I mean, that insurance clause that we're talking about, that they have to actually be paid, then, then we get paid a dollar a year.
And my discussion with Nate on that the other day was, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, and if the individual pays them premium, but I will tell you that I also understand the business part of it, that when you say there will be absolutely no cost to the town, that paperwork comes through the town. So there's, there's going to be some minimal costs dealing with the paperwork part of it, if something like that were to, to be agreed upon.
And Mayor and Nate on that, I think we should check with the League of...
I thought, I'm calling, um...
Because I don't know if that's, if that's...
You call local government, right?
I don't, I don't know if that's legal to do that to the...
So call state insurance?
Right.
Okay.
That's how they're doing, that's how Cedar City Corporation operates. As a matter of fact, every, I was, I was astonished to find out that every single person on Cedar City Council is insured, because they're all private businessmen, are insured through, and they pay their own insurance.
Well...
I'm sure.
Yeah. I, I think it's worth, Jean, to check into that.
Okay.
And then we see what the results are.
I, I think compensating the mayor, since we don't have a city manager, we don't have a city planner, the mayor has to carry that burden. I think getting a stipend of some type for compensation is fine, but as far as council members, I mean, I would want no money, and I don't think anybody on council should receive. You're voted by the people, and you, you take the responsibility and spend the time.
Well, I could use that same, I could use that same analogy for a mayor position, too.
Right, but there's difference, since the structure of this town is set up with the mayor.
But I, I still agree with people not being elected or appointed into slavery. I believe they should do it, number one, because they want to serve the public.
Frank, don't, I, I'm not asking for any sort of payroll or anything, that's not what I'm asking for, I'm just saying, under the, under the, what Jean and I are working on, there may be a requirement in there that there has to be, that there has to be some sort of compensation to that, and if that compensation's a dollar a year...
Yeah, I, I, I have no idea.
So, so I'm not, I'm not looking for any money either, if I should donate my dollar and get it back, that's fine, so...
So we, we should know before the next meeting when we...
I, I will find out tomorrow, I'll call both others, make sure they'll tell me.
Yeah, because that, those numbers would, if that's something we elected to go with, those numbers would have to show on our budget, because that process is going to be seen on, on our, uh, accounting, that transfer of monies.
The $6,000 for public works director, does that include his assistant?
Yes. I didn't break that up, because I didn't want to go through all of their, my mistake. But it will be broken up.
That is a combination of both of those positions.
That is.
What was that?
Um, the public works director.
Public works, the same thing on, on the park.
I, I have no further input at this time.
I think you need to redo it.
Oh, no, this is the first time I've done this all. Thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
You're the one that took on that position, your job title says that's what you're supposed to do, but not by yourself. Like I told you, this, this group right here is...
Hand-based.
To help you, but that is your job, Mr. Precara.
I love it, it was fun.
It ain't over, it ain't over yet.
I know, but it's fun.
Okay.
I'm leaving.
Thank you, Jean.
Thanks, Jean.
Send me in the ticket.
Okay.
We will be looking at, these changes need to happen because this document is going to be available to the public, because a public hearing is going to be held in three weeks, which will be our next town council meeting, there's an extra coincidence. So that will be posted 10 days before, the document will be available for public view. We have time restraints on this, I don't want to have to call a special meeting before June 22nd to try and get this budget finalized. This budget's fairly simple, it's just a very small town with very limited revenue and expenses, so shouldn't be any issue, I would think, by our next council meeting, to have a public hearing on that and to approve that budget.
Alan?
Yes?
If we need an extension, we can get one.
We won't need one, Jean.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to give it a name? 10 days?
Oops.
That's when you need it.
10 days before our next meeting, which is on the 13th, so 10 days before.
That was Monday.
Yes.
That's good, they were...
June 4th. Okay, was there any further discussion on that budget item? Okay, we're going to move on to item number two under discussion. What?
We need to have it ready to go by June 4th. Some comments need to come by Friday, by Thursday, goes into that. Morning.
Seven days. That's what I mentioned last time. Seven days.
So two weeks from now. So one week from now.
So 31st.
Yep.
Item number two, we're going to have some discussion on our Exhibit J. We have had the applicant bring before us back in, I think, March, like March 9th, first part of March, the applicant brought, uh, before us. I guess I shouldn't say the applicant, it, the process came from the Planning Commission, and those staff reports and recommendations came to the town council on some items with grapevine wash. And we have Bob Nicholson here for our staff, and we had some discussion in the first part of March, and as we go through this, I'm sure that we will remember part of this, I would like to solidify some of these details. In the annexation agreement, there were timeframes that were set in that agreement, and one timeframe that the applicant was willing to waive was the amount of time before a public hearing could be held once it came from the, the Planning Commission, and the applicant has agreed to extend that timeframe. So we, we need to be actively engaged in the documents that are before us, you know, from any applicant. Bob? How about taking the hot seat?
Okay.
Now, the direction that, on these specifics that came before us in the 1st of March, we're talking about some items that were within the development or part of the, planning part of the... part of the development. You wanna take off and lead anywhere from there, Bob, or do you want me to just specifically will start with?
I don't know, if you'd like, I could kinda recap what the, the planning commission recommended, which was this list of ten items, which is kinda very.
If you would, that will probably help the public understand a little better what the planning commissions.
Make sure you're talking, the mic's not working that great.
Well, first of all, I just maybe give a little lead-in, that an annexation and development agreement has been approved by the town council, and I believe that occurred in two thousand and nine, which granted conceptual approval for the project, including twenty-five hundred dwelling units, or up to, up to a maximum of twenty-five hundred dwelling units, and up to three hundred thousand square feet of commercial area. I came on board, I think it was last September, to assist the town in starting planning of the zone, so a lot of, a lot of discussion took place prior to my involvement, so I'm learning about the project as I go as well. One thing we noticed, that high-density projects such as Grapevine Wash need a high level of amenities and outstanding building design to be successful and considered an asset to the town. Grapevine Wash has provided an architectural pattern book showing what building designs proposed for the various types of residential structures. It would be critical to make sure that Grapevine Wash buildings meet the standards set forth in their pattern book. The proposed Grapevine Wash project faces major obstacles to becoming a reality, including obtaining the necessary public utilities to the site, through water, sewer power, et cetera, also the necessary road accesses with adequate capacity to handle the project's anticipated traffic. It noted, and the developer understands that the project's phasing will be limited according to street capacities and other infrastructure, water, sewer power, so it will be phased in based on that availability of all infrastructure, including public. I think it's understood that modification of the north five fifteen interchange, to be a full interchange, is necessary for the project to be developed as proposed by the developer. Just quickly on the, the ten items that the planning commission recommended, number one is compliance with all Leeds Town Codes, unless a specific waiver or variance is granted by the town council. All utilities, including water, wastewater, storm drainage, electric power, natural gas, telephone, and some other utilities, shall comply with local and state standards, which are extensive, I think there's state and even federal standards involved in large sewer power systems, so they'll have to comply with those standards. Street designs which are different than those set forth in the Leeds standard specification for design and construction shall be approved by the Leeds Town Council after hearing the recommendation from the planning commission and the Leeds Town Council Planner and Engineer. We did start that discussion, Mary probably remember, we did talk about various modifications to the road design, the planning commission spent quite a bit of time on those, they devoted at least two full meetings to talk about some of those modifications.
Bob, will you help the public understand what roads were referring to?
Well, these were internal to the development. Their project would have, say asphalt widths that are somewhat narrower than the Leeds standard specifications, and it, and it's kinda typical for these, what you might call traditional neighborhood developments or new urbanist projects, street designs are a little narrower, the curb radius may be a little tighter to slow down the traffic, the traffic speed is a little slower, the, you know, the issues that the planning commission went through, is they talked about design speed on the roads, they made a recommendation, and I don't know how much detail you wanna go into on those, but they went through a number of issues. Developer internal to the project has a intersection, a critical intersection, that's a wide intersection. Typically, you know, we don't typically have a Y intersection, normally intersections intersect at ninety degrees, that was discussed at lane, but finally, the planning commission did feel comfortable, based on some, you know, some conditions, but they did feel comfortable with the proposed Y intersection. There's discussion about intersection spacing, and, and basically the, the standards that were in the Grapevine Wash plan were approved, which do meet national standards, in terms of, they do comply with the basic standards for intersection offsets, a minimum of one hundred fifty feet between street intersections and things like that, there's a series of recommendations on intersection spacing. There was discussion about sidewalks on all streets, and I think the recommendation basically is that all streets in Grapevine Wash would have a sidewalk, at least on one side, in some cases it'd be on both sides, but a minimum on one side. The traffic mitigation plan is still in process, the, the developer, he probably had a copy that initially submitted a, a mitigation plan, and at one point even talked about five lanes on Main Street, council said no, they're, they're not gonna entertain a five travel lanes, he wanted to keep the lead to it with on-street parking on both sides, so they, going back, and they have, you know, put that in, and it's still a work in process, I think that's, that will be coming forward, but, and so there, there's a number of those standards that the planning commission's recommended approval, and I think you began some discussion back in March on some of those standards. I'll just maybe go on, the original proposal when Grapevine Wash first came forward is they would, they had some gravel parking areas, the planning commission said no, and the developers agreed, they have eliminated all gravel parking, so all parking along the street, or adjacent, or near, or wherever, would be their asphalt, concrete, brick pavers, or similar materials through by the town council, anyway, would be some form hearts are seen. All buildings shall comply with the design intent set forth in the architectural pattern book for Grapevine Wash, all buildings which are three stories or more in height shall be submitted to design review by the planning commission prior to their consent of filling for that. The purpose of such design reviews to promote compliance with the pattern book, which is absolutely critical, I mean, they show some nice designs in the pattern book, and I'm sure the town must make sure that all those details are complied with. Parking for residential units shall comply with the section in the Leeds parking requirements, this is, unless a modification to these parking requirements is specifically approved by the town council. You had some discussion on parking requirements, at that point, the consensus was that the single-family units would be required to have the two covered, so we all fully enclosed garage spaces per unit. Then there was some discussion about the multifamily, or the housing that's part of mixed use, and I think the council, as I recall, said, let's defer that issue until a specific site plan, a detailed site plan came forward, and then you could consider it, and perhaps even approve a, a small phase one, to let them establish a track record to see, I think that was a discussion, you didn't take motion, a vote on it, but that's the discussion, as I recall.
Let's, let's actually come to a, a real conclusion on that.
Okay.
That item, at this point, probably should've backed up on six, so, I think as Bob goes through these, and I think up to, obviously, we can see up to number five, which was stricken, that the utilities, wastewater, and all those standards are, are gonna be binding, and the street designs, we, our town engineers are fairly comfortable with what was agreed upon, I think that, that we need to have for that specific discussion, and whether we make, you know, any other recommendations, that we have our, our engineers here, so we can have that dialogue, and there will be some more changes on that, that's the reason that they're not here tonight, because, you know, there's still a little bit of discussion that, on the mitigation, and so, they'll still follow the roadways, even though these roadways are specific designs inside of the project. I'd say that was still in process, we crossed number five off, because the applicant agreed that, that wouldn't exist. So, let's start, let's go right to number six, even though we skipped over.
How about four?
That's still in process there, between the applicant.
Well, but I, I have one question to ask, and I think this makes, I think it makes a lot of sense to me, can everybody hear? So, there, there are three phases to the development, my question is, if phase one, which has the largest number of homes and businesses and population, will the road structure be such to handle that, or is that number too high, before phase two and three come into play?
I think that's a discussion we need to have.
Yeah.
And, and make that decision with our, our engineers.
It may be too high of a population for the structure of the road, because we won't have the diamond pattern, we don't wanna open up Main Street for traffic, so there are.
Well, and maybe that's what, as they're working on their mitigation plan, because of the town's decision, they're standing on Main Street itself, to the extent that that could be pushed. So, I, I think that if they're gonna revise that, we need to wait and see what the applicant's revision is, and then.
Cause the phases may not, it may need to be, the numbers may be twisted on the number of development of homes and businesses.
That's addressed somewhat in item nine, Frank?
Right.
So, yeah, you got a, you got a point there, and I think that, at this point, we, the applicant needs to present to us whatever changes in that mitigation plan.
So, things like the smaller driveway entrances that we.
We'll get to that, we're, that's still down the line.
Thank you.
I thought that was a separate item, but maybe that was part of that number six with architectural, when it was dealing with driveways.
Well, we, we have, the planning commission has made a recommendation on that, on the driveways, and I, I don't recall whether that's been discussed at the council, but they, they're, the planning commission made a recommendation, you know, that we can talk about that right now, or a little later?
Well, if we consider that to be in item number six, I'd like to just take each one of these, and then we can just finish it off, and we'll know exactly whether it's still pending, and if it's pending because of town staff is still looking at that, or whether it's the applicant that needs to submit those changes or documents to us, or if we just agree on, like, number five, you know, is, is scratched off, number six, but it talks about the architectural, architectural plan book, and talks about height of buildings. And of course, this is the recommendation from the planning commission.
Right. My, my concern is, you know, you have the, you're gonna have to have a fire department out there, and you're gonna have to have hook and ladder, cause I think this will exceed the height of buildings that we have in the rest of the town, so, I, I have a concern with that particular cost, and, and I put it in this sense, if you, if you build a five-story building, but you haven't sold all the lots, and you don't have all the tax base coming in, then that means the developer's gonna have to pay for that fire engine, or the rest of the town would have to pay for that, so I think there's gotta be a sequence of what can be built in order for there to be the infrastructure and the funding to provide that particular building that size.
I, I think that what we have to answer first, though, is the mixed-use ordinance says maximal height is thirty-five feet. I think that this council needs.
But this says more on this line six, so it says three-story or more in height, so, but that has to be approved.
But keep in mind that the applicant has not granted that, the applicant come in under mixed use, and what they are entitled, that you, they're entitled, when they came under annexation, is mixed use, and in the annexation agreement, it allowed a maximum of a certain amount, if it fits, and the language isn't exactly if it fits, but if anybody's had an opportunity, and I'm sure that most of you have, on the little Get Involved Leeds website, they done a link on there to that annexation agreement, I think it's worthwhile that you look at, it's a public document, it's recorded at the county, and it's been a while since I looked at it. I'm still mostly in favor of the way that it was put together.
So, are we gonna just stick with the thirty-five maximum?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that would preclude four stories. And having looked at the property and seen anything four stories is going to, to block a lot of users. It's not that much lower than the free lane property. And I believe that the information said sixty-five feet for height for four stories, and forty-five for three stories.
No, the, actually, the pattern book said forty-five for four stories, and thirty-five for three stories, that's what their pattern book stated.
Okay. So, there was another document I was looking at back from March that indicated it was the other.
Yeah, and I think there was a little conflict, I, I really noticed there was a conflict, and I think the applicant staying with the pattern book that was submitted.
Okay.
So, are we comfortable with line size number six?
At thirty-five, under the ordinance, thirty-five of the lines.
Well, we don't have to stick, all we have to, I mean, if you don't wanna make any modification, then you just tell the applicant, we're not, we're not making a modification there, that ordinance states this, and that's what it is, I.
I say no modification, whatever the other council members say.
And keep in mind, this is not a, this is not an action, this is discussion.
Right.
Now, a little bit of dialogue I had with Bob, is exactly how do we come to these, as we discuss this, because we don't wanna make a motion on every individual item that's here, but we need to come to an agreement, in general, as a council, and then, when the annex, or when the final development agreement comes to us, and that development agreement contains these exhibits, that's where it needs to be stated that, okay, follows the exhibit, and here, and here's what the exhibit is. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that would be in the development agreement, that thirty-five feet would be the maximum height, I guess, and if that comes before you, that's what'll be voted on, right, is that what we're saying?
That's the way I think that the, the best process would be. I, I don't see any sense in making individual motions on all of this, because it's all wrapped up into that agreement, that's why that agreement's extremely important, that we look at and make sure that we're comfortable with it, and that's the binding document. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, I don't know if there's anything else on number six, I think, well, I was, you know, I talked driveway width, basically, under driveway width, they're proposing a lesser width than the town code allows, so, you know, I'm not sure that, the, they're proposing that their driveways on the single-family dwellings have a driveway width of ten feet, the ordinance in Leeds allows up to twelve, so, you know, there's a little narrower driveway to that single-family home, I don't, I don't know if that's, since. to that single-family home. I don't, I don't know if that's, since they're not exceeding the maximum. I don't think there's an issue that I see.
Does, does the ordinance say up to 12? Then we have some.
Minimum.
What is that, the minimum 12?
Was it a minimum 12? I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, it was. It was a minimum of 12.
Minimum 12. Then that would be an exception.
And a minimum of 24 if it was a.
Okay. All right. That's my mistake. They would then, they're asking that instead of a minimum of 12 on single-family, that they have 10 feet wide and on the multifamily, instead of a minimum of 24, that they'd have 18-foot wide drives.
From an engineering perspective, Bob, is there any, any reasoning why it would be unsafe for getting in and out of the driveway or?
Well, I don't, not particularly. The only thing is the, the narrower driveway, you know, you, you slow, that forces you to slow down to make that turn because it's a little tighter radius. You know, obviously in a commercial zone, you do want to keep, on a commercial development, you want to keep those driveways fairly wide so people don't have to come almost to a stop in order to make that turn. You slow down and you make a comfortable turn. The narrower the driveway forces you to slow down. Now, these are in residential zones, so I don't know that that's a problem. Nothing else. I don't, I don't see that as an issue, Frank.
I do.
Okay.
I see it because people are then going to have to park out on the street because if you have a two-car, 18 foot instead of 24, it's going to be hard to park two cars in the driveway.
Side by side.
Side by side. And, and also if you have 10 instead of 12 for some of the wider SUV and trucks, there's not going to be a place for people to walk up the driveway. So they're going to, and then they're going to be cutting across the grass and the curb so, or whatever the planning is. So it'll look shabby. And I, I've seen it in town where they have narrow driveways and it looks, doesn't look good. It's, and the other part's not safe because if, what's going to happen is the person's going to park on 18, but half of the tires are going to be on the grass and landscaping. And then when they back up, they're going to be throwing whatever gravel or something out to the street, which will hit somebody or they'll run over a kid because they won't be driving out correctly.
I can't remember where that fell in on this list. I remember we had a little bit of discussion on it, but I.
Um, there was something in March. I didn't look back on it. I had that on my list.
Yeah, because that was my big point about having to have garages instead of carports and that's, was part of that discussion.
Yeah, but there was, I think, that kind of consensus that all single-family would be the requirement of the two enclosed spaces garage. So that could be part of number six. So Mayor said, number seven, we go on then is the, the parking, yeah, parking for residents, a unit shall comply with the Leeds zoning code requirements, which states two fully enclosed spaces for a single-family unit. The council said, yes, they want to stick with that. Then there was a discussion about, well, what about the multifamily? And I think at that time there was, it was, as I recall, and I may be wrong, I haven't read the minutes of that, it was more like, well, let's see what a detailed plan would say. Defer that, not, you know, not decide yea or nay now and they have to wait till a detailed plan and then perhaps allow a, a phase one. So like, show us, show us what that, you know, one space covered and, you know, how they're going to handle the parking. Now, you know, I was kind of where I was left, I think, last time.
I, I think that we.
Mr. President.
I think we agreed that we were in favor of staying with the, the two-covered, the two-car garage.
Right.
Whether, and I know that we had a lot of discussion on that about what people do with their garages. I, I think it just sets, it sets the pattern for the, the safety that the town's looking at complying with because when it's built, you know that there's a space for two, two cars that's going to be off the road. Now, people will fill their garages up with everything but vehicles and we still allow, at this time, we allow on-street parking. So it's not that you're going to mitigate that other than that you've made sure that when that dwelling went in, there was sufficient parking for off-street parking for the use.
Okay. Does that cover that, number seven there, or we?
I'm comfortable. I, I don't mind if anybody else is.
Uh, is number seven the one that deals with apartment, multifamily?
It will. Yes, it, it deals with all of the parking.
So on, just to make, make it clear on the multifamily, the parking units were required, then, the, the garages?
No, I don't, it was not required. It's a covered.
It was covered.
Not enclosed, just.
Not enclosed.
Well, and I, I, I think we did have dialogue of, as far as saying, okay, let's see what you've got planned when it comes to that. But that was the dialogue that we had, whatever direction that you want to take. It is a little bit, the code, or the ordinance, you know, reads that what is required.
I just wanted to.
The existing ordinance requires that it's.
Personally, you know, I don't see that being an issue on my end that would cover, cover stalls, but I just wanted to clarify that, that we're going through this because nobody mentioned parking on, on multifamily.
Let me, I, I, here's, I just found the code and so here it says, on the parking, all other dwellings, including townhouses, condominiums, you know, all multifamily, shall have two parking spaces per dwelling unit, at least one of which shall be fully enclosed. So it's more than is covered. That's in the code today.
It shows that one has to be fully.
Now, in the mixed use zone.
Do you mean that number of that clause?
Yeah, it's a 6.4, 0.3, 0.1, 0.3. And I think in the mixed use code, there does say that the town council has the flexibility to adjust the parking. So I think you do have some discretion in whether you want to defer that until they bring in the detailed plan. I think that's where you're going to think a lot of story.
At some point in time, there is going to be some public buildings in the, in the fine red.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a little different than, than townhouses, townhouses.
I don't have a problem looking at that in the future, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should go below our, our codes. But, you know, if there's something different in the mixed use that is in our ordinance.
So you're, you're asking, Bob, is anything in mixed use addressing that?
Right.
Well, okay, I'm sort of with him right now. Let me read you what the code says in, out of the mixed use zone. It says, parking requirements shall be determined per existing town standards for each use. However, parking requirements may be reduced if it can be shown that shared parking is a viable alternative. The town reserves the right to dictate the amount of parking and/or location of the parking spaces within a project to achieve the objectives of this ordinance. And then down further in section 10, there's some, it just says, any height, size, and setback limitations required by this chapter may be modified at the town's sole discretion upon finding that said modification has been disputed in terms of chapter. So it doesn't really, it doesn't, doesn't state parking in that one section on flexibility, but on the other one, it does say you may reduce it if it can be shown that, you know. So right now it says, on the multifamily, it says you have two spaces. One has to be fully enclosed. The mixed use code says you could reduce that if you make a finding that they accommodate their parking in some, in some manner through shared parking or whatever. And I guess that's where you allow them down the road to come in and make that case.
Let's see the numbers.
Okay. The mixed use, it was chapter 23 and the parking requirement, the parking section is in, in section five. Let's see, 23.9.5. And then the, the section that talks about flexibility in the mixed use zone is section 23.10. So do you want to move on?
Yes, we'll do it.
Uh, number eight was maintenance responsibility for public streets and utility systems shall be determined and approved as part of the final development agreement for Great Line Wash. There was some discussion about their local district taking responsibility for the street maintenance and utility systems. I don't know that that's been finalized. So that would be an issue you'd have to.
I don't think we've had any discussion on that at all, as I recall, as a council.
So that's something maybe, I don't know if you want to talk tonight or wait till the development agreement and obviously that's a significant issue, the maintenance responsibility.
That will be a significant issue. And I would, I would be comfortable in dialogue with our engineers being present on that and what, that, that will be a key part of that agreement. It really will. And it doesn't have to be all-inclusive one way or the other. I mean, that, I guess the town could pick what items that they are willing to say dedicate those and we'll take care of the maintenance. So that will be, that will be an in-depth discussion on that. Number nine is the.
Before you go to the after, my question I came up on was, is there going to be a substation that's required that Rocky Mountain Power is going to have to put in special power lines and will all the other lines be buried underground? Because that's what we've been trying to do in town is have all of our power lines underground.
I don't know that we've had any discussion on that. I haven't heard anything from the planning commissioners. To my knowledge, there is not a substation that is going to be required.
Yeah. But, but the reason for asking that is, if the substation's put in one place, what's the impact on the other owners of that property and where should that be placed if it's going to be a large substation because of its population? I'm not sure how Rocky Mountain's set up. I know they put the redundancy in because I got the easements worked out for them between Zitla and Rocky Mountain Power, but I don't, I don't know what the capacity is for, for this development.
I think that, I think we will let the representative from the applicant perhaps answer that question because I know that they've been engaged with the utility companies and have some preliminaries on that. Drake, can you answer those questions?
Yeah, just in short, regarding the power, I've met with the local Rocky Mountain Power representative and he feels like out of their existing substations, the entire development can be served. So we are not anticipating any need for an additional substation.
Thank you. And, and all, all lines would be underground?
Uh, inside our development. That would be our intent.
Thanks.
So number nine was the number of accesses that said, number nine says, a second public street access is required when Great Line Wash has 101 or more dwelling units and a third public street access is required when 600 or more dwelling units have been issued billing permits.
This might just be on this staff report as far as language. I guess we could consider it when it says a public street access, if the town elected not to take those streets upon them that were inside the development because those are going to be public streets too. So that's just a little bit of wording. It doesn't make a lot of sense unless you say, well, the streets inside there belong to, you know, the development.
So you're saying that there may be the private streets that may qualify as the at those access points or? I wasn't sure.
I, I'm thinking maybe you should just say access to the develop, strike public perhaps. Well, that could, that's something I guess we'll have to figure out in the development agreement.
Also on wording, just minor semantics, I would recommend taking out the verbiage for more. Second public street access is required when Great Line Wash has 101 dwelling units. Painted that for more.
I don't mean more dwellings.
Okay. And I think these numbers, Frank, I think that if we focus on these numbers, I don't think that it's going to be realistic to focus on these numbers until the applicant can say, look, here's a modified.
Right.
Impact study that, or a mitigation plan because of a direction that the town says that they don't want to go.
Right. So my, is this the appropriate time on number nine to say that within this draft that we omit the intimate domain and omit the Babylon Middle Road?
I don't think that's appropriate time because the draft you have in front of you is not the same draft that our legal.
Okay.
Is looking at at this point.
Okay. But can we footnote that on this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you footnote that?
Yeah. Well, I think that he's, no, your town attorney's already struck the domain language and, and so I think, I believe they struck it, the Babylon Road, Babylon, Middle Road reference as well.
Okay, good.
So really that one, just, just so we understand, I, I think that item number nine, we really can't make any type of a decision on any numbers or whether we agree with whatever the numbers that are before us until the applicant gives us a little better findings on their mitigation plan.
Then number 10 is just requirement, Great Line Wash shall create a project-wide master homeowners association with the CCNRs, which are the conditions, covenants, restrictions, which creates an architectural review committee for the project. The architects review committee shall review plans before supplemental to the planning commission and town council. So their, our test committee would kind of be the first screening step, kind of self-police and then beyond that, you know, after that, they would come to the town planning commission and then on to the council. So those are kind of the broad, you know, broad conditions. You know, obviously you could probably make a list of 50 items, but then those 50 items probably will be in the development agreement. But this is kind of the broad overview.
What do you think, Frank?
Well, if, can I ask some questions about this?
You can ask questions about that, realizing that that is the first draft that came before the town council.
And, and Mayor, if you can't answer, Bob Kent, then maybe Drake will be able to answer the question. So assume that there would be a sewer system that would be put into Great Line and it's incorporated in the town. And if there was any state or federal money involved, would the town be obligated then to put sewer system in the entire town, which would be cost everybody else?
If the town were to accept any type of monies from the state?
Well, no. Well, no, if, if, if they are a, an entity and they get a private or a state loan for sewer, how does that affect?
If, if they do that as a local district, then that's, that burdens upon the local district. And they have the ability as a local district to levy taxes within their district, which would be within Greatvine Wash.
But I'm just wondering if we would be by state law and federal law compelled to have a sewer system?
No, because it's a separate entity.
Okay. And then the second part is if they're thinking of having their own self-contained system without going into main systems with hurricane and so forth. With like a...
Ash Creek.
Ash Creek, thank you. So that's, that was a question on that part.
No, I would say most cities, and I would think of course St. George, Washington, I think of most cities around, will have areas in their town that are served with the public sewer system and areas that are still on septic systems. The state code says that if you have a public sewer line within three hundred feet of a home, any are required in the state code to connect it, that it's a three hundred foot corner.
Okay. Thanks, because that might be a question that might come up tonight, so.
Now, on the front page of this file, it has here, the left paragraph in the back room, it says, "Previous traffic mitigation proposals have included the idea of having a five lane traffic on Main Street. The town council has wisely rejected that idea and stated that Main Street will remain a two lane street with off-street parking and a center turn lane." Is, so, so five lane, that's off the table.
I think that's been clear that the council has said that, that that was off the table.
Right.
That, that's what kind of forced the applicant to have to look at his mitigation plan again.
Well, I just wanted to come from that. And then my other question has to do with fire protection and, and another fire station. And Chief Lewis is here and if, if I could ask him whether, when they would generate enough revenue to pay for that or whether there would be federal or state funds or whether that would be something the developer would have to provide.
We are in the process of also entering into an agreement with Greatvine Wash, which will address, answer those questions. The exact details is not...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Because they are also a special di- district.
Right.
It makes more sense that they enter into an interlocal agreement with Greatvine Wash's developer.
So, does that really the town have any responsibility for public safety than in doing this final agreement?
Except for... Now, when you say public safety, normally what's considered public safety?
Well, a decent fire, yes.
So the answer is no.
But for fire?
For fire, because Leeds area's special service district is the entity in our area that takes care of fire and anything. And I'll tell you that I did approach Don Fawson, actually he approached me, but I threw it out to him, because I tried to nudge him and say, as the, as LA SSD considers taking on law enforcement also, since you're a public safety entity that exists already. And at first, he was thinking that I was referring to crossing over back and forth. And I said, no, totally separate. Have your fires, you have your fire people and you have law enforcement people. And he says, no, no, we're, we're a fire district, we're not law enforcement. I think it's understood that modification of the north five fifteen interchange to be a full interchange is necessary for the project to be developed as proposed by the developer. Just quickly on the, the ten items that the planning commission recommended. Number one is compliance with all Leeds town codes unless a specific waiver or variance is granted by the town council. All utilities, including water, wastewater, storm drainage, electric power, natural gas, telephone and some utility shall comply with local and state standards, which are extensive. I think there's state and even federal standards involved in larger sewer power systems, so they will have to comply with those standards. Street designs which are different than those set forth in the Leeds standard specification for design and construction shall be approved by the Leeds Town Council after hearing the recommendation from the planning commission and the Leeds Town Consulate Planner and Engineer. We did start that discussion, Mayor, you probably remember, we did talk about various modifications to the road design. The planning commission spent quite a bit of time on those. They devoted at least two full meetings to talking about some of those modifications.
Well, will you help the public understand what roads were referring to?
Well, these were internal to the development. Their project would have, say asphalt widths that are somewhat narrower than the Leeds standard specifications and it, and it's kind of typical for these, what you might call traditional neighborhood developments or new urbanist projects. Street designs are a little narrower, the curb radius may be a little tighter to slow down the traffic, the traffic speed is a little slower. The, you know, the issues that the planning commission went through is they talked about design speed on the roads, they made a recommendation. I don't know how much detail you want to go into on those, but they went through a number of issues. Developer internal to the project has a intersection, a critical intersection that's a Y intersection. Typically, you know, we don't typically have a Y intersection. Normally intersections intersect at ninety degrees. That was discussed at length, but finally, the planning commission did feel comfortable based on some, you know, some conditions that they did feel comfortable with the proposed Y intersection. There's discussion about intersection spacing and, and basically the, the standards that were in the Greatvine Wash plan were approved, which do meet national standards in terms of, they do comply with the basic standards for intersection offsets, a minimum of one hundred and fifty feet between street intersections and things like that. There's a series of recommendations on intersection spacing. There was discussion about sidewalks on all streets and I think the recommendation basically is that all streets in, in Greatvine Wash would have a sidewalk at least on one side. In some cases, it'd be on both sides, but a minimum on one side. The traffic mitigation plan is still in process. The, the developer, he probably had a copy, initially submitted a mitigation plan and at one point even talked about five lanes on Main Street. Council said, no, they're, they're not going to entertain a five travel lanes. He wanted to keep the lead to it with on-street parking on both sides. So they, going back and they have, you know, put that in and it's still a work in process. But I think that's, that will be coming forward, but, and so there, there's a number of those standards that the planning commission's recommended approval. And I think you began, you began some discussion back in March on some of those standards. I'll just maybe go on. The original proposal when Greatvine Wash first came forward is they would, they had some gravel parking areas. Planning commission said, no, and the developers agreed, they have eliminated all gravel parking. So all parking along the street or adjacent or near or wherever would be their asphalt concrete, brick pavers or a similar material approved by the town council. Anyway, it would be some form hard serve scene. All buildings shall comply with the design intent set forth in the architectural pattern book for Greatvine Wash. All buildings which are three stories or more in height shall be submitted to design review by the planning commission prior to issuance of billing permit. The purpose of such design review is to promote compliance with the pattern book, which is absolutely critical. They show some nice designs in the pattern book and I'm sure the town must make sure that all those details are complied with. Parking for residential units shall comply with the section in the Leeds parking requirements. This is unless a modification to these parking requirements is specifically approved by the town council. You had some discussion on parking requirements. At that point, the consensus was that the single-family units would be required to have the two covered, so all fully enclosed garage spaces per unit. Then there was some discussion about the multifamily or the housing that's part of the mixed use. And I think the council, as I recall, said, let's defer that issue until a specific site plan, a detailed site plan came forward and then you could consider it and perhaps even approve a, a small phase one to let them establish a track record to see. I think that was a discussion, we didn't take motion, a vote on it, but that's the discussion, as I recall.
Let's, let's actually come to a real conclusion on that.
Okay.
That item at this point. Probably should have backed up on six. So I think as Bob goes through these, and I think up to, obviously we can see up to number five, which was stricken, that the utilities, wastewater and all those standards are, are going to be binding. And the street designs, we, our town engineers are fairly comfortable with what was agreed upon. I think that, that we need to have for that specific discussion and whether we make, you know, any other recommendations, that we have our, our engineers here so we can have that dialogue and there will be some more changes on that. That's the reason that they're not here tonight because, you know, there's still a little bit of discussion that, on the mitigation and so those still fall in the roadways even though these roadways are specific designs inside of the project. I'd say that would still in process. You cross number five off because the applicant has agreed that that wouldn't exist. So let's start, let's go right to number six, even though we skipped over that.
How about four?
That's still in process there between the applicant...
Well, but I, I have one question to ask and I think this makes, I think it makes a lot of sense to me. Can everybody hear? So there, there are three phases to the development. My question is, if phase one, which has the largest number of homes and businesses and population, will the road structure be such to handle that or is that number too high before phase two and three come into play?
I think that's a discussion we need to have.
Yeah.
And, and make that decision with our, our engineers.
It may be too high the population for the structure of the road because we won't have the diamond pattern, we don't want to open up Main Street for traffic, so there are...
Well, and maybe that's what, as they're working on their mitigation plan, because of the town's decision, their stand on Main Street itself and the extent that that could be pushed. So I, I think that if they're going to revise that, we need to wait and see what the applicant's revision is and then...
Because the phases may not, it may need to be, the numbers may be twisted on the number of development of homes and businesses.
That's addressed somewhat in item nine, Frank?
Right.
So yeah, you got a, you got a point there. And I think that at this point, we, the applicant needs to present to us whatever changes in that mitigation plan.
So things like the smaller driveway entrances that we...
We'll get to that, we're, that's still down the line. Thank you. I thought that was a separate item, but maybe that was part of that number six with architectural, when it was dealing with driveways.
Well, we, we have, the planning commission has made a recommendation on that, on the driveways and I, I don't recall whether that's been discussed at the council, but they, their, the planning commission made a recommendation, you know, that we can talk about that right now or a little later.
Well, if we consider that to be in item number six, I'd like to just take each one of these and then we can just finish it off and we'll know exactly whether it's still pending and if it's pending because of town staff is still looking at that or whether it's the applicant that needs to submit those changes or documents to us. Or if we just agree on like number five, you know, is scratched off. Number six, it talks about the architect, architectural plan book and it talks about height of buildings. And of course, this is the recommendation from the planning commission.
Right. My, my concern is, you know, you have the, you're going to have to have a fire department out there and you're going to have to have a hook and ladder because I think this will exceed the height of buildings that we have in the rest of the town. So I, I have a concern with that particular cost and, and I put it in this sense. If you, if you build a five-story building, but you haven't sold all the lots and you don't have all the tax base coming in, then that means the developer's going to have to pay for that fire engine or the rest of the town would have to pay for that. So I think there's got to be a sequence of what can be built in order for there to be the infrastructure and the funding to provide that particular building that size.
I, I think that what we have to answer first though is the mixed use ordinance says maximum height is thirty-five feet. I think that this council needs...
But this says more on this line six, so it says three-story or more in height, so... But that has to be approved.
But keep in mind that the applicant is not granted that. The applicant come in under mixed use and what they are entitled, that you, they're entitled when they came under annexation is mixed use and in the annexation agreement, it allowed a maximum of a certain amount if it fits. And the language isn't exactly if it fits, but if anybody's had an opportunity, and I'm sure that most of you have, on the little get involved Leeds website, they done a link on there to that annexation agreement, I think it's worthwhile that you look at it. It's a public document, it's recorded at the county and it's been a while since I looked at it. I'm still mostly in favor of the way that it was put together.
So are we going to just take this as thirty-five maximum?
Yeah.
And then that would conclude of four stories. And having looked at the property and seen anything four stories is going to block a lot of users. It's not that much lower than the freeway property. And I believe that the information said sixty-five feet for height for four stories and forty-five for three stories.
No, the, actually, the pattern book said forty-five for four stories and thirty-five for three stories. That's what their pattern book stated.
Okay. So there was another document I was looking at back from March that indicated the other.
Yeah, and I think there was a little conflict. I, I even noticed there was a conflict and I think the applicant's staying with the pattern book that was submitted.
Okay.
So are we comfortable with line size number six?
At thirty-five. Under the ordinance, thirty-five for the line.
Well, we don't have to state, all we have to, I mean, if you don't want to make any modification, you just tell the applicant, we're not, we're not wanting any modification there. That ordinance states this and that's what it is.
I say no modification of whatever the other council members said.
And keep in mind... And keep in mind, this is not, this is not an action item. This is discussion.
Right.
Now, a little bit of dialogue I had with Bob is exactly how do we come to these, as we discuss this, because we don't want to make a motion on every individual item that's here. But we need to come to an agreement in general, as a council, and then when the annex, or when the final development agreement comes to us, and that development agreement contains these exhibits, that's where it needs to be stated that, okay, follows the exhibit, and here, and here's what the exhibit is. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be in the development agreement, that 35 feet would be the maximum height. Yes, I need, if that comes before you, that's what will be voted on. Right? Is that what you're saying?
That's the way I think that the, the best process would be. I, I don't see any sense in making individual motions on all of this, because it's all wrapped up into that agreement.
Complete stall?
That's why that agreement's extremely important, that we look at and make sure that we're comfortable with it, and. That's the binding document? Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything else on number six. I think, well, I was, you know, talking driveway widths. Basically, under driveway widths, they're proposing a lesser width than the town code allows, so, you know, I'm not sure that, the, they're proposing that their driveways on the single-family dwellings have a driveway width of 10 feet. The ordinance in Leeds allows up to 12. So, you know, they're just, it's a little narrower driveway to that single-family home. I don't, I don't know if that's, since they're not exceeding the maximum, I don't think there's an issue that I see.
Does, does the ordinance say up to 12? Then we have some.
Minimum.
Or is that the minimum?
Oh, is it a minimum 12? I'm sorry, then, okay. I was.
Yeah, it was, it was a minimum of 12.
Minimum 12, then that would be an exception.
And a minimum of 24, if it was a.
Okay. All right. That was my mistake. They would then, they're asking that instead of a minimum of 12 on single-family, that they have 10 feet wide, and on the multifamily, instead of a minimum of 24, that they'd have 18-foot wide drives.
From the engineering perspective, Bob, is there any, any reasoning why it would be unsafe for getting in and out of the driveway, or?
Well, I don't, not particularly. The only thing is, the narrower the driveway, you know, you, you slow, that forces you to slow down to make that turn, because it's a little tighter radius. You know, obviously, in a commercial zone, you do want to keep, on a commercial development, you want to keep those driveways fairly wide, so people don't have to come almost to a stop in order to make that turn. You slow down, and you make a comfortable turn. The narrower the driveway forces you to slow down. Now, these are in residential zones, so I don't know that that's a problem. Nothing else. I don't, I don't see that as an issue, frankly.
I do.
Okay.
I see it because people are then going to have to park out on the street, because if you have a two-car, 18 foot instead of 24, it's going to be hard to park two cars in the driveway.
Side by side.
Side by side. And, and also, if you have 10 instead of 12, for some of the wider SUV and trucks, there's not going to be a place for people to walk up the driveway, so they're going to, and then they're going to be cutting across the grass and the curb, so, or whatever the planting is. So it'll look shabby. And I, I've seen it in town, where they have narrow driveways, and it looks, doesn't And the other part's not safe, because if, what's going to happen is, the person's going to park on 18, but half of the tires are going to be on the grass and landscaping, and then when they back up, they're going to be throwing whatever gravel or something out to the street, which will hit somebody, or they'll run over a kid, because they won't be driving out correctly.
I can't remember where that fell in on this list. I remember we had a little bit of discussion on it, but I.
There was something in March, I kind of brought back up, had that on the list.
Yeah, because that was my big point about having to have garages instead of carports, and that's, was part of that discussion before.
Yeah, but there was that, I think, that kind of consensus that all single-family would be requirement of the two enclosed spaces of garage space. So that could be part of number six. So, Mary, should I, if we go on then?
Yes.
The, the parking, you know, parking for residential units shall comply with the Leeds zoning code requirements, which states two fully enclosed spaces per a single-family unit. The council said, yes, they want to stick with that. Then there was a discussion about, well, what about the multifamily? And I think at that time, though, it was, if I recall, and I may be wrong, I haven't read the minutes of that, it was more likely, well, let's see what a detailed plan would say. Defer that, not, you know, not decide yea or nay now, and then wait for a detailed plan, and then perhaps allow a, a Phase One. So like, show us, show us what that, you know, one space covered, and, you know, how they're going to handle the parking. That, you know, that was kind of where it was left, I think, last time.
I, I think that we. I think we agreed that we were in favor of staying with the, the two-covered, the two-car garage.
Right.
Whether, and I know that we had a lot of discussion on that, about what people do with their garages. I, I think it just sets, it sets the pattern for the, the safety that the town's looking at complying with, because when it's built, you know that there's a space for two, two cars, but it's going to be off the road. Now, people will fill their garages up with everything but vehicles, and we still allow, at this time, we allow on-street parking. So it's not that you're going to mitigate that, other than that you've made sure that when that dwelling went in, there was sufficient parking for off-street parking for the use. Okay. Does that cover that, number seven, then, or we?
I'm comfortable. I, I don't mind if anybody else.
Oh, is number seven the one that deals with apartment, multifamily? Is it number nine?
It will. Yes, it do, it deals with all of the parking.
So on, just to make, make it clear, on the multifamily apartment units, were, were there any required in the, the garages?
No, I don't.
Garage is not required, it's a covered.
It was covered.
Not enclosed.
Just not enclosed.
Well, I, I think we did have dialogues, as far as saying, okay, let's see what you've got planned, when it comes to that. That was a dialogue that we had, whatever direction that you want to take. It is a little bit, the code, or the ordinance, you know, reads that would be required.
I just wanted to.
The existing ordinance requires that it's enclosed.
And personally, you know, I don't see that being an issue on my end, that it covers, covers stalls, but I just wanted to clarify that, that we're going through this, because nobody answered parking on, on multifamily.
Let me, I, I, it appears, I just found the code, and so here it says, on the parking, all other dwellings, including townhouses, condominiums, you know, multifamily, shall have two parking spaces per dwelling unit, at least one of which shall be fully enclosed. So it's more than is covered.
That's in the code today.
And it shows that one has to be fully. Now, in the mixed-use zone.
Do you see that number of that code?
Yeah, it's 6.4, 0.3, 0.1, 0.3. And I think in the mixed-use code, there does say that the town council has the flexibility to adjust the parking. So I think you do have some discretion in whether you want to defer that until they bring in the detailed plan. I think that's what you're going to think a lot of strength.
At some point in time, there is going to be some public buildings in the, in the plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a little different than, than townhouses, townhouses.
I don't have a problem looking at that in the future, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should go below our, our codes. But, you know, if there's something different in the mixed-use that is in our ordinance.
So you're, you're asking, Bob, is anything in mixed-use addressing that?
Right.
Well, okay, I'm totally concerned right now. Let me read to you what the code says there, out of the mixed-use zone. It says, parking requirements shall be determined per existing town standards for each use. However, parking requirements may be reduced if it can be shown that shared parking is a viable alternative. The town reserves the right to dictate the amount of parking and/or location of the parking spaces within a project to achieve the objectives of this ordinance. And then down further in section 10, there's some, it just says, any height, size, and setback limitations required by this chapter may be modified at the town's sole discretion upon finding that said modification would be in spirit in terms of chapter. So it doesn't really, it doesn't, doesn't state parking in that one section on flexibility, but on the other one, it does say, you may reduce it if it can be shown that, you know. So right now, it says, on the multifamily, it says you have two spaces, one has to be fully enclosed. The mixed-use code says, you could reduce that if you make a finding that they accommodate their parking in some, in some manner, through shared parking or whatever. And I guess that's where you allow them down the road to come in and make that case.
Let's do the numbers.
The mixed-use, it was chapter 23, and the parking requirement, the parking section is in, in section five, let's see, 23.9.5. And then the, the section that talks about flexibility in the mixed-use zone is section So do you want to move on?
Yes, we'll do it.
Number eight was, maintenance responsibility for public streets and utility systems shall be determined and approved as part of the final development agreement for Great Line Wash. There was some discussion about their local district taking responsibility for the street maintenance and utility systems. I don't know that that's been finalized, so that would be an issue you'd have to.
I don't think we've had any discussion on that at all, since I recall, as a council.
So that's something maybe, I don't know, do you want to talk tonight, or wait till the development agreement? And obviously, that's a significant issue, the maintenance responsibility.
That will be a significant issue. And I would, I would be comfortable in dialogue with our engineers being present on that, and what, that, that will be a key part of that agreement. It really will. And it doesn't have to be all inclusive, one way or the other. I mean, that, I guess the town could pick what items that they are willing to say dedicate those, and we'll take care of the maintenance. So that will be, that will be an in-depth discussion on that. Number nine is the, before you go to the after.
My question I came up on was, is there going to be a substation that's required that Rocky Mountain Power is going to have to put in special power lines, and will all the other lines be buried underground? Because that's what we've been trying to do in town, is have all of our power lines
I don't know that we've had any discussion on that. I haven't heard anything from the planning commission. To my knowledge, there is not a substation that is going to be required.
Yeah. My, my reason for asking that is, if the substation's put in one place, what's the impact on the other owners of that property, and where should that be placed if it's going to be a large substation, because with its population, I'm not sure how Rocky Mountain's set up. I know they put the redundancy in, because I got the easements worked out for them between Zettla and Rocky Mountain Power, but I don't, I don't know what the capacity is for, for this development.
I think that, I think we will let the representative from the applicant perhaps answer that question, because I know that they've been engaged with the utility companies and have some preliminaries on that. Drake, can you answer those questions?
Yeah, just in short, regarding the power, I've met with the local Rocky Mountain Power representative, and he feels like out of their existing substations, the entire development can be served. So we are not anticipating any need for an additional substation.
Thank you. And all, all lines would be underground?
I, inside our development, that would be our intent.
Let's move on.
So number nine was the number of accesses, it said, number nine says, a second public street access is required when Great Line Wash has 101 or more dwelling units, and a third public street access is required when 600 or more dwelling units have been issued building permits.
This might just be on this staff report, as far as language. I guess we could consider it, when it says, a public street access, if the town elected not to take those streets upon them that were inside the development, because those are going to be public streets, too. So that's just a little bit of wording that doesn't make a lot of sense unless you say, well, the streets inside there belong to, you know, the development.
So you're saying that there may be the private streets that may qualify as the at those access points, or? I wasn't sure.
I, I'm thinking maybe you should just say, access to the development.
Strike, probably, perhaps.
Well, that could be out in some, I guess, I could figure out in the development agreement.
Also, on wording, just minor semantics, I would recommend taking out the verbiage four more. A second public street access is required when Great Line Wash has 101 dwelling units. I'd need to rid of that four more.
No more dwellings.
And I think these numbers, Frank, I think that if we focus on these numbers, I don't think that it's going to be realistic to focus on these numbers until the applicant can say, look, here's a modified.
Right.
Impact study that, or a mitigation plan because of a direction that the town says that they don't want to go.
Right. So my, is this the appropriate time on number nine to say that within this draft that we omit the intimate domain and omit the Babylon Mill Road?
I don't think that's appropriate time, because the draft you have in front of you is not the same draft that our legal.
Okay.
Is looking at at this point.
Okay. But can we foot an opel on this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you put an opel up?
I think that he's, oh, your town attorney's already struck the domain language, and, and so I think, I believe they struck in the Babylon Road, Babylon Mill Road reference as well.
Okay, good.
So really, that one, just, just so we understand, I, I think. So really, that one, just, just so we understand, I, I think that item number nine, we really can't make any type of a decision on any numbers, or whether we agree with whatever the numbers that are before us, until the applicant gives us a little better findings on their mitigation plan.
Then number ten is, just requirement, Great Line Wash shall create a project-wide master homeowners association with the CCNRs, which are the conditions, covenants, restrictions, which creates an architectural review committee for the project. The architects review committee shall review plans before submitted to the planning commission and town council. So their, our test committee would kind of be the first screening step, kind of self-police, and then beyond that, you know, after that, they would come to the town planning commission, then on to the council. So those are kind of the broad, you know, broad conditions, you know, obviously, you could probably make a list of fifty items, but then those fifty items probably will be in the development agreement, but this is kind of the broad overview.
What do you think, Frank?
Well, if, can I ask some questions about this?
You can ask questions about that, realizing that that is the first draft that came before the town council.
And, and Mayor, if you can't answer Bob Kent, then maybe Drake will be able to answer the question. So assume that there would be a sewer system that would be put into Great Line, and it's incorporated in the town, and if there was any state or federal money involved, would the town be obligated then to put sewer system in the entire town, which would be cost everybody else?
If the town were to accept any type of monies from the state?
Well, no, if, if, if they are a, an entity, and they get a private or a state loan for sewer, how does that affect?
If, if they do that as a local district, then that's, that burdens upon the local district, and they have the ability as a local district to levy taxes within their district, which would be within Great Line Wash.
But I'm just wondering if we would be, by state law and federal law, compelled to have a sewer system?
No, because it's a separate entity.
And then, the second part is, if they're thinking of having their own self-contained system without going into main systems, with hurricane and so forth, with like, um?
Ash Creek.
Ash Creek, thank you. So that's, that was a question on that part.
No, I would think, most cities, and I would think, of course, St. George, Washington, I think, of most cities around, will have areas in their town that are served with the public sewer system, and areas that are still on septic systems. The state code says that if you have a public sewer line within three hundred feet of a home, then you're required in the state code to connect it, that it's a three-hundred-foot corner.
Thanks, because that might be a question that might come up tonight, so. Now, on the front page of this, Bob, it has here, the left paragraph in the back, it says, previous traffic mitigation proposals have included the idea of having a five-lane traffic on Main Street. The town council has wisely rejected that idea and stated that Main Street will rename the two-lane street with off-street parking and a center turn lane. Is, so, so five-lane, is, that's off the table?
I think that's been clear, that the council has said that, that that was off the table.
Correct.
That, that's what kind of forced the applicant to have to look at his mitigation plan again.
Well, I just wanted to come from that. And then, and then my other question has to do with fire protection and us, and another fire station, and Chief Lewis is here, and if, if I could ask him whether, when they would generate enough revenue to pay for that, or whether there would be federal or state funds, or whether that would be something the developer would have to provide.
We are in the process of also entering into an agreement with Great Line Wash, which will address, answer those questions. The exact details is not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because they are also a special di- district.
Right.
It makes more sense that they enter into an interlocal agreement with Great Line Wash's developer.
So, does that really leave the town of any responsibility for public safety than in doing this final agreement?
Now, when you say public safety, Bob, normally, what's considered a public safety?
Well, I, decent fire, yes.
So the answer is no.
But for fire?
For fire, because LEEDS area's special service district is the entity in our area that takes care of fire and animals.
And I'll tell you that I did approach Dylan Fawson, actually, he approached me, but I threw it out to him, because I tried to nudge him and say, has the, has LA SSD considered taking on law enforcement also, since you're a public safety entity that exists already? And at first, he was thinking that I was referring to crossing over back and forth, and I said, no, totally separate, have your fires, have your fire people, and you have law enforcement people. He says, no, no, we're, we're a fire district, we're not law enforcement.